Hi, I'm Mr. Bozard, uh, I work in the, um, County, County Office, got a lot of hats. Uh, I'm the board to work with you guys.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one in favor of appointing Ms. Bozard to be my new sports secretary?
Oh.
So move, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear, uh, uh?
All in favor?
All in favor, yes. Uh, all of those say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or accusations? Seeing none, the motion passes. Ms. Bozard, congratulations.
Thank you.
For both working with you. Alright, and from there, I will, uh, pass it off to you.
Do you do the resolutions?
I'll do the resolutions, okay. So, uh, first is a, a resolution memorializing Board's decision on, uh, res- on, uh, application number P dash twenty twenty-five dash nineteen concerning the Seventh Day Adventist Church. Uh, it was an application for use and bulk variants at block one twenty-five, lot nine point zero one, uh, street address seven hundred Mohammed Road. Um, do I hear, uh, well, do I need a, uh?
Motion to adopt.
Yeah, do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution? Sign, right, please, sir?
This is the sign, your vote is for her to have the June meeting. So, um, whoever attended the June meeting would be eligible and would have.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry. Um, we got it, alright, do I, um, someone who attended the, uh, June meeting? Do you hear a motion to approve? Thank you, Asase. Uh, Mr. Kennedy is the second. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any recusals?
Abstentions?
Abstentions? Seeing none, motion passes. And, uh, last resolution is resolution P dash twenty twenty-five dash twenty. This concerns, uh, waiver for, um, I did, uh, for block twenty-two lot thirteen point zero one, street address twenty-nine Grand Street. This was, uh, to convert from, uh, office into single third wood, right?
Yeah, it was a use variance and waiver of site plan, um, for twenty-nine Grand Street. Approved by the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or accusations? Seeing none, motion passes. Moving now to applications, uh, quick note, um, the application for thirty Church Street, block eighty-four, lot fifty-two, from applicant Development Group LLC will not be heard at tonight's meeting. The applicant has requested to adjourn the hearing on this application till the next meeting, to be held on September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, six o'clock PM. No further notice or publication will be required.
So the applicant had, uh, agreed to toll the time for the board to act. Is there a motion to approve the adjournment request, uh, of this application to the September meeting?
Sure.
Move this second in, by Mr. Kennedy and Asase.
Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions or recusals?
Okay, for members of the public, uh, anyone who's interested in the application by thirty, uh, church, uh, four thirty Church Street, the applicant is Development Group LLC, it's block eighty-four, lot fifty-two, um, it's not going to be heard tonight, it'll be heard, uh, at the September fifteenth meeting. No further notice or publication is going to be required, so anybody interested in that, you will not get further notice. And the board cannot entertain discussion or questions or comments concerning this application because the applicant is not here.
Thank you. Would that mind, um, if it makes more sense to do sixty to sixty-two, or? You know, is this, okay. Um, should we do sixty to sixty-two, or one eleven?
We'll do sixty-sixty-two first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good, alright.
And I did have, yeah, I did have a chance to read the notice provided, uh, from Mr. Adams' office. The sign is sufficient, so the board does have jurisdiction.
Uh, John Adams from the John Adams offer, now representing, um, Little Butler, or sixty-sixty-two. This is a request to, um, take the office space on the second floor and give it to an apartment, um, testify here today. I have Derek Little from, um, Little Butler, do you testify?
No, no.
Not necessarily, my sister, who also was a co-owner on the building, Lisa Butler.
Wait, wait, you would swear witnesses in if they're gonna testify?
I'll testify myself.
So then we'll just wait, Mr. Adams, go ahead.
I'll just throw it in one time, you want to do it separately?
I'm sorry?
Usually I throw it in at one time, but I can do something.
Well, I thought you were giving an overview of the application, so we didn't, I didn't really realize you were diving in yet.
Uh, so then I have, uh, Mr. Remsa, who's our planner, uh, if we could, uh, have, uh, those two sworn in.
Okay, so you're done with the overview, so you're gonna call your first witness, or you, okay. Is it?
Just, just, sorry.
Okay.
Would you state, come, come next to the microphone so everybody can hear you, like, uh?
Mark?
What, both?
I swear, I'm just trying to.
Do your favor, does a favor, and state your name, sir?
Uh, Derek Little.
Okay, and Mr. Remsa, Mark Remsa?
Mark A. Remsa.
Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this board?
I do.
And, and for the board's reference, Mr. Remsa is a, a professional planner who has been, who's appeared before this board and many boards, uh, before, and has been accepted as an expert in professional planning.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. You can go ahead with Mr. Little's testimony.
Okay, thank you. Hold on, my hat for a little while, hold on. Present, so, yeah, but I, I do have the, um, potential plan, but I think you're gonna, I try to hold this thing such a way that it may seem to be all abusive, so.
This is part of your submission, so it's just an enlarged copyright?
This is your article, huh?
Okay.
Yep, and then, uh, and all the other things are, are just in your.
And then tomorrow, when you get the chance, it'll be email, isn't already in the package, just pointed out to the board secretary, uh, electronic copy. Just refer to this as A1, just to make sure.
Yep, Aaron Mark?
Are they marked for you?
Probably, probably Mark and I'll check it out for them.
Okay, great, thank you.
So they're already marked, and they're, we made the system, we find documents that I submitted, uh, to the board. Mr. Butler, could you please, uh, give an overview of your own, of Little Butler's ownership of the, um, sixty-sixty-two High Street?
Sure.
Uh, okay. Uh, essentially, in, uh, what?
Just, you just have to adjust the height or something, and you sort of have to be within the ranges of a.
I don't know if that makes a difference, I don't know. Uh, okay, so my name's Derek Little, I'm one of, uh, four owners of, uh, Little Butler, which owned the property at sixty-sixty-two High Street. That consists of myself and my wife, uh, my sister and her husband, essentially. Um, we, uh, purchased the property, uh, through owner financing, from the previous owners, uh, I think it was February of twenty twenty, and have, uh, held it since. And, uh, gone through lots of trials and tribulations and lots of learning along the way. Uh, have a solid tenant on the first floor and have had, uh, residential tenants on the third floor, uh, that we inherited and, and are in good state.
And what's on the second floor?
Second floor is office space, two different office spaces, uh, that the previous owners, uh, one of the offices they used as their own office, uh, since they were lawyers. And then, uh, the other, I don't know what it was used for in the past, um, we have had them with a, uh, real estate agent pretty much throughout the time that we owned the building, and have had, uh, very much difficulty in renting them out of, uh, the five years. We've rented out, uh, for two different, uh, businesses, uh, for about a one-year period each. So out of a possible ten years worth of rentals, we've gotten two. Yeah.
We'll try better. We're gonna try something better, okay.
You hear me, Dan?
Yeah, we can hear you, yes.
Should I give a recap or do we have a basic, basic understanding of it? Okay, um, any other?
Okay, so, um, um, I have right, you know, marked right here this, we're currently markets exhibit B. Um, that is a, um, a globe of, of the lot, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, that, that is your building?
Yes, correct.
Uh, and this is the, the drawing of the lot?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and, um, basically that building takes up the entire lot, except for a little spot in the back?
Ninety-five percent.
Okay, uh, in, um, on the left and right side of the building, what's on the left and right side of the building?
Uh, my other business, the locally dream pub is on one side, and then the other is, I believe, uh, residential as well.
There's no alleyways or anything, the building's just connected to.
Correct, shared, shared walls between all of them, yeah.
Okay, and? I'm showing you now what's been marked already as, uh, exhibit C, can you describe, um?
Sure, that's the, that's the face of sixty-sixty-two High Street. Uh, first floor is, uh, retail, second floor is the office space, uh, the larger unit that you see, those two windows face High Street, uh, and then the third floor is, uh, one of the residential apartments.
Okay, so, and then when you go into the, to the, to, you go into the front door here?
Yes.
Then you go, then there's a, uh, there's a door here to the retail space, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And then as you simply walk down the stairway, and there?
Down the hallway, and then up to the left would be a central staircase that goes throughout the three floors.
Throughout the three floors, okay. And then, uh, down here at the bottom, this is a picture of the back of the building?
Yes.
And in the back of the building, you have a stairway?
Correct.
And this door here is the entrance, uh, to the second floor?
Second and third floors.
Second, oh.
Well, second floor, and then from the second floor, you can get to the third.
Right, so you enter the, the, the building from here, and then you, uh, you can go up another stairway to the third floor?
Yes.
And, um, or you can go into the, um, uh, the two, the two rooms on the second floor, is that correct?
For the office space, yes.
And there's a light right here?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, that's a, that's a motion to take your floodlight?
Correct.
Okay, and, uh, uh, your garbage, uh, recycling go here?
Uh, yeah, both there, correct, yeah.
Okay, and currently, um, uh, you have a, a separate garbage can and recycling can for, uh, each tenant on this second and third floor?
Currently, correct, yes. If, once the, uh, once, once we get residential in there, I'll have to add a few more cans, but there's plenty of room for it.
Yeah, so you'll add another recycling and another, uh, trash?
Yes.
Uh, for each of the two tenants?
Yes.
And you'll, and they'll, they'll go right along here with their, with their other?
Correct, there's also space under the stairs there as well.
Okay, um, and are, are, um, are you familiar with, uh, with the operations of Fula?
Yes.
Okay, and are you familiar, because you're a part owner of that operations?
I'm a minority owner of it.
And can you tell us a little bit about how long a customer tends to stay in, 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 uh, in the retail space?
Five to ten minutes.
Five to ten minutes, and how many customers do you have at a time?
Between, like, I'd say average four.
Wow, okay, uh, and where do they park?
Mostly on High Street, but some in the back as well.
Okay, and in the back, in the back of the building, there's two-hour parking back there, two, free two-hour parking?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so the, the, um, uh, the, the impact of, of, um, of adding apartments, uh, would not really impact, uh, Fula?
No.
Would it, is that correct?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and, um, uh, in regard to, uh, the impact of parking, um, these tenants would, would, would park basically elsewhere, is that correct?
Elsewhere, from where?
Well, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't park for two hours at a time, is what I'm saying.
Uh, I, I, not unless they want to get tickets like I do when I park at the restaurant.
Okay.
Alright.
I previously marked this as, uh, as exhibit A, and that's, that's the drawings that y'all have in, you have in front of you, okay? Uh, and, uh, and this here is the, the existing site plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and there's already two apartments, not two apartments, two units?
Two separate spaces, correct, yes.
And your plan is to keep the, the spaces, um, uh, the, the same, not to change the space?
Very little modification, yeah.
Okay, um, and the, the, the water and, uh, um, utilities and stuff, they run up this wall right there, is that correct?
There's a chase, essentially, of that, the first floor, second floor, and third floor all, all share.
Yes.
Both for, uh, the freshwater and also waste.
And that's the reason why you have the, you kept the bathrooms here, you added the kitchen here, and you're gonna add the kitchen?
That's right, yeah.
And this right here is the sort of the divider between the two apartments, is that correct?
Yes.
And that, this area right here is actually right behind the stairwell?
Well, this is this common stairwell that goes, when they rebuilt the building in the seventies, I believe it was, th- this central stairwell was added, I believe, when they merged a couple buildings together. And so this goes from the first floor to the second floor to the third floor, all, all about four feet wide and, and up, uh, the mail wall way to the third floor.
And but right, right behind the stairwell, um, block, that's where the, where a bathroom currently is.
That's where it already is, yeah.
Yep, uh, and that, that would mean, and that's where the water and all those things come in?
That's right.
Would you need to make any changes to the utilities in order to, um, uh, do, do this plan?
No.
Okay, now looking at, at the proposed plan, you're gonna convert these two offices to bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay, and you're basically not changing anything here, this is just, these offices are, are remaining the same?
The walls and doors don't change, no.
Yes, uh, and then you're gonna make the, this area right here, uh, that's the end of the kitchen area, is that correct?
Yes.
And then this area right here, we're gonna take out this, this wall right here, you're gonna make this like the living area?
Correct, all of, none of the walls in, on the interior are structural.
Right, but it, it, yes, okay, and then you're gonna have a bathroom right here?
Yes.
Okay, and then when you go down the hallway here, there's another door which enters into the, to the second apartment, is that correct?
Yes, proposed apartment.
Yeah, the proposed apartment, and you're gonna have a, a, a bathroom here?
Correct, basically you just open up the wall there and they utilize the, the same plumbing infrastructure, right, yeah.
And then you're gonna have a kitchen right there for the same, for the same purpose?
For the same reasons, yeah.
Okay, you're gonna have a bedroom right here?
Yes.
Is that correct? And you're gonna have a, um, a living area here?
Correct.
Okay, now, there's, there's gonna be a door right here, that's existing door, correct?
That already exists, and that exits to the same place that you saw in the previous photograph for that second floor, uh, entrance and exit.
Yeah, so when you enter the door in the back, back here?
Yes.
Okay, you can go through this door and come into this apartment, or come down here through this door and come to this apartment, is that correct?
Yes.
And, uh, um, or you can do this door here, and you could, you could go up this stairway to the third floor?
That would get you another way to the third floor, beyond the central stairwell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and the third floor has, have any apartments?
Two.
And you have?
Two two-bedroom apartments.
Two two-bedroom apartments, and you've had long-term rentals there?
They've been there each, over ten years.
Okay, um, and, uh, the square footage of each one of these apartments, do you know what they are?
I don't actually recall off the top of my head, I believe the smaller, uh, one was somewhere in the eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and the other one might be a thousand, I, I don't remember.
Okay, so according to the drawing, you've got, uh, the, the two-bedroom apartment is, uh, is twelve-hundred square, two-hundred-and-eighty square feet?
Okay.
And the, uh, one bedroom apartment is nine-hundred-ninety-five square feet?
That sounds correct.
They're both over the, 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 the living specifications?
That's what I'm told.
Okay, so unless anybody has any questions, uh, for Mr. Low right now, then I'm gonna move on to Mr. Remsa.
I have a question.
Yes, sir?
The third floor, did I hear you say two apartments?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, um, and how many bedrooms each?
Two in each.
Two in each, um, so how many peo- how many tenants do you have in each, each apartment?
Uh, one is a family of four, and the other is a family of two.
So it's a family of four with children, yes?
Yes.
How many children?
Two, two are children and two are the parents.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other questions for this witness?
I have a question, I need to hear, how many exits are required?
Two.
Is there a second exit on the apartment A?
The, the exit is, 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 is right here, you go down, you go down the hallway. Either you go down the steps, or you go down the hallway and go back. So this is a, this is, this is a, this right here is a, is a hallway.
So look at the previous, the current structure, which would, which would remain, right, this is a hallway. But does apartment A have access to that, if that door is closed, apartment two?
Yes, it's not, the, the, the front, the door to the apartment is here, and this is a hallway door.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so here's the apartment door, this is a hallway, and it goes right down.
Where did you say they park?
In the back primarily, I, I don't know for sure, I know the one, the, the family of four, they usually are in that two-hour parking, and sometimes it's lower if it's busier, but I don't know.
However, but it's two hours, I don't know if they're allowed to park overnight?
Definitely they're allowed to park overnight, I don't know if they get tickets, I don't know if they get tickets or anything throughout the day, they've never mentioned anything like that to me.
So Mr. Remsa, can you talk a little bit about the parking?
So, the plan shows a door right near this central stairwell, and it says right on the door, apartment A. So, doesn't appear that you can go in past that, you know, that, that someone?
That's, that's true, that shouldn't be that way, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go to the construction office with that, for sure. I would keep it much more like this original plan, you know?
Yeah, the door is, is.
That, that is.
That's a, that's a slip-up, or I probably did not catch that, because this is supposed to be the door right here.
Yeah, that would remain, that wouldn't, I wouldn't change, there's no advantage to change that whatsoever.
Yes.
Now it's clear.
Yeah.
I apologize for that, but, but the door is right here, um, and this emergency thing, that's that door. It actually, if you go on the inside, and the, if you go into the inside, it says emergency exit here, this just says exit. The arrow is pointing to the wrong way.
Oh.
I wouldn't do it anymore, I thought that's what it said, but I wouldn't want to make sure. Any more questions, no, Mr. Remsa? Mr. Remsa?
Um, I, I did want to note for the record that the board has six eligible members hearing the application tonight, and the applicant, I take it, has agreed to, you have the right to demand seven, and bump it to next month. You're proceeding with six at this point?
Proceeding with six.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're all on the same page here.
Mr. Remsa, you're previously qualified as a, uh, expert, so we're gonna, uh, go ahead and get into your testimony. Uh, you wanna give an overview of, of this, of this, um, plan?
Uh, yes, um, good evening, Mr. Chair and, and board members and members of the public. Um, the subject property is known as block forty-seven, lot eleven, um, otherwise known as sixty-dash-sixty-two High Street. And it's, um, on the, uh, western side of High Street, uh, toward the upper part of High Street, uh, which is just, uh, uh, south of, uh, Frank, Frank Lucas Road. So, um, the current use, I had, had a little bit of a description by Mr. Little. Uh, the first floor has that cannabis dispensary, and the second floor has the two offices, and the third floor has the two existing residential apartments. Uh, property's in the B-one Central Business District. Um, just to give you an idea of what surrounds the property, um, uh, to the north, i- is the local, the, the restaurant. Um, and, uh, to the east, uh, is a, uh, number of, uh, different, uh, commercial, uh, enterprises, uh, and to the south, uh, more of those, uh, also with, uh, apartments on the upper floor. And then to the west is the larger, uh, parking lot. And what the applicant proposes is to convert the two, um, uh, of, of units which, which house the, uh, offices, the two office space in, into, uh, two individual apartments. One having the, um, two-bedroom unit, and then the other having the one-bedroom unit. And as you heard before, that, uh, the square footage, uh, uh, exceeds the minimums, uh, uh, for example, the one-bedroom unit is gonna have over nine-hundred square feet, and the minimum required by ordinance is six-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Uh, two-bedroom units are required to have eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and we heard that the, uh, two-bedroom unit's gonna have just a little bit more than that twelve-hundred square feet. So we're here tonight for, um, a, 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 a D-five density variance. Uh, the way the, uh, ordinance is written, it's not written in the typical, uh, units per, per acre, i- it's actually written in terms of, um, each, uh, unit, uh, above commercial has to have, uh, twenty-five-hundred square feet of land. And, um, the property only contains, uh, I'll get the actual square foot for you. Uh, three-thousand-seven-hundred-eighty-one square feet, uh, and, uh, we already exceed that, uh, density with the, the existing units, and to convert the, um, uh, the, the, the two, uh, office space requires, um, I believe over ten thousand, where if we bring in, so it's the ten thousand square feet of land. We don't have that, um, and, uh, I'm not telling you anything new in terms of, uh, the character of, of the property and all the surrounding properties, uh, it's actually built, uh, during the nineteenth century, predating any, any kind of automobiles, and where you typically had a commercial or, uh, business enterprise on the first floor, and the upper floors were for, for residents. Uh, oftentimes, the, the business owner and then other, uh, residential apartments. And, and so this building is no different than that typical, uh, construction, uh, back in the, the nineteenth century, which continued into the early twentieth century. So, um, uh, we also have, uh, the fact that we don't have, um, onsite parking. Uh, you heard that the current condition is almost ninety-five percent of the property is built with, uh, or constructed with a building, and that, um, the parking under, is undertaken, uh, in, in a typical nineteenth, early twentieth century, uh, setting, uh, the urban fabric often has on-street parking, which you do have, and then you have, uh, parking lots, uh, that, that are located around, uh, the commercial development. So in terms of, uh, this, uh, yes, and thank you for putting up that, that aerial, uh, is that, is that labeled?
Yes, exhibit D, uh, D.
D, exhibit D, so exhibit D is an aerial photograph, uh, or aerial image, I should say, taken from Google Maps, uh, just recently. Um, I can go over here and point out the property and... So I'm pointing to the, the property as, uh, that we're talking about tonight, and then here's a lot of the public parking. Your ordinance in, 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 uh, Mount Holly Township has, uh, this lot, um, uh, ninety-six with two-hour, two-hour parking, and then you have three-hour parking at this lower lot. And then, and actually, in the ordinance that I read, uh, uh, on, on your code, doesn't allow overnight parking here. However, High Street, Monday through Friday, nine AM to six PM, two-hour parking again. But in the evening, uh, on-street parking is permitted overnight. And then in addition to that, when I read through your ordinance, Paxton Street has another park, public parking space. This one is not included in any of the over, uh, the restricted overnight parking. And this one would also allow for overnight parking. And as you can see, it's probably less than a five-minute walk, if necessary, for a, a, a tenant of the apartments to have to park over here, uh, during the day. If they are parking back here, they're subject to that two-hour parking, uh, restriction, and then in the evening, they, they have their choice of parking on High Street or over in the public parking lot over here.
But there is no restrictions on this area right over here, um, other than the reserved spots, or some reserved spots?
Yes, and, and I know the county, um, uh, has, has, uh, leases some, some of this for, for the courts. So in terms of the, uh, parking, uh, it is typical of, of, of the, the older ur- urban fabric that you have here, uh, the, the on-street parking and then the pockets of, of parking strategically located around the, the downtown business district. Um, and having, uh, residents above units is, is also, uh, quite typical, uh, uh, of, of the, um, original construction. And as we're seeing, uh, when office space used to be in great demand, office space is no longer in great demand. Big shifts in, in, in the market, uh, requiring, um, less and less, uh, office space. Big shifts in, in, in the market, uh, requiring, um, less and less, uh, office space. And you heard Mr. Little trying to, to market it for, for office space and had, has had very little success.
And the, the parking would be less, uh, with, with the apartments than it would be with office spaces, is that correct?
Yes, because the, the parking that's required, um, uh, it would be only, uh, two spaces per, per, per unit. And then when you have a commercial or office space, the parking requirement is much higher.
And those people would want to be wanting to be parking during the restricted times, the, uh, the nine-to-five, whereas many of your apartments are gonna be after nine-to-five or overnight, is that correct?
That, that's correct. You, you would end up with, uh, uh, what, what's often called as a shared parking scenario, where, where daytime commercial operations would be using parking, and then, uh, people drive to their, uh, to their jobs and so forth. And then in the evening, when parking, uh, demand for commercial space is much lower, hopefully the, the local does well, though, uh, and Village Idiot, those, those of the evening, but, uh, parking requirements are significantly less than daytime operations. And then you would have the residents parking, uh, popular on-street, or, uh, streets should be parking in the parking lots and allow overnight parking.
So, this would reduce the over, this would reduce the parking requirements possibility, is that correct?
It, it would. It would, because of the square footage, uh, of, uh, parking required for the office.
And in, in regards to, are you aware that there's a shortage of, of, of apartments, living places in New Jersey?
Well, you, 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 uh, don't have to go far. You can read about that in the paper quite frequently. But yes, there, there is a severe housing shortage, not just in New Jersey, but throughout the United States.
And this would increase the number of housing, which, which would reduce some of that demand, is that correct?
Well, that's right. It would add two, two new units of, uh, of, uh, of living space.
And by, in, by reducing the retail, this, through office space, that would make other office spaces more desirable, is that correct?
Yes, and I do know that vacancy rates in, in Burlington County are, are, are quite high.
Okay, um, could you go over the positive criteria, please?
Yes, so, um, uh, now we're gonna be talking about the, the D-five, the, the density variance. So in terms of the positive criteria, we have to talk about how this application would promote the intent purpose of the municipal land use law. And that's NJSA forty-four and fifty-five D dash two, and I'm going to, uh, cite this small, uh, letter, uh, section. I'm gonna paraphrase the, uh, the intent, and then I'll, uh, explain how, uh, the, uh, application promotes that particular purpose. So the first one I come across is G, and that's provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of land uses, of which residential, in this case, is one of them. Now, the B-one, uh, zone does contemplate residential units over commercial spaces. Uh, here we have a unique case where we have office on the second floor, that's gonna be converted, um, and, uh, it is, uh, well-suited for, for that, that conversion. Uh, so the building exists, uh, with commercial on the first floor, vacant office spaces on the second, and already, already had two apart, residential apartments on the third floor. So the next one is I, promote a desirable visual environment. Uh, the proposal, uh, if, if you know the building, it's a very attractive, uh, building from the public, uh, view. Uh, that will be maintained, uh, no changes to, to the physical character. It will still continue to fit into the fabric of, of the, the downtown. Uh, J, uh, that's to prevent urban sprawl, and, uh, how, how does this happen? Well, uh, we're not having to build, uh, on, on another vacant piece of property or, or green space. Here, we're actually reusing an, an existing building, uh, that has, uh, two, two units, if you will, that are, uh, suitable for, uh, the conversion. Uh, M, and that is also, uh, to help, uh, shape the land development with a view toward lessening the cost of development and to a more efficient use of land. Similar argument about, uh, reusing a property, uh, reusing vacant, uh, commercial or office space, uh, that would be, uh, put to efficient use in terms of, of housing. And then I go back to A, that's to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use, uh, into, or development of land, uh, that will promote, uh, public health, safety morals, and general welfare. And, uh, I talked about, uh, the prior, uh, purposes being advanced, and certainly, uh, both collectively, but also, um, promote this purpose. So, that's the first part of the positive criteria. The second part is, is this site particularly suited, uh, for what's being proposed? Well, in my, uh, my professional opinion, I believe it is, and, and why is that? Because the site's already developed with a mix of retail and office, uh, and commercial, I'm sorry, uh, commercial, uh, and retail, residential space, excuse me. The second floor can be easily, uh, converted and accommodate, uh, the two residential, uh, uses. Uh, and third, the site allows for the separate, separation of, of retail traffic, uh, on the first floor from the residential uses on the upper floor. Uh, and, uh, I, I apologize for being redundant, but I wanted to point out that the site is a part of a historic land use pattern of Mount Holly's downtown district that was developed with commercial uses on the, uh, first floor and apartments on the upper floors, and, uh, it was developed under this land use pattern, and this site certainly, uh, fits into that, uh, pattern as well. Uh, and in terms of parking, uh, we talked about the fact that, uh, parking cannot be provided onsite, but, uh, in terms of, uh, sufficient parking elsewhere, uh, we have the, uh, daytime commercial parking that is easily accommodated by the parking in the rear, as well as on High Street. And then when off-hours come about, uh, we have the ability to have on-street parking for the residents, as well as, uh, the Paxton Street, uh, parking lot. So, uh, the other prong of the test is the negative criteria. So we have to look at, does this, uh, proposal have any substantial detriment to the public good? And focus, of course, is on the surrounding land uses. So, in terms of converting the, uh, two office spaces into apartments, I see no negative impact on the restaurant, which is to the north. I see no negative impact, uh, east to the, uh, uh, commercial spaces to, across the street to, to the east, nor to the, uh, mix of commercial and residential uses to the south, and certainly, I see no negative impact to the, uh, parking lot to the west. So, uh, as a matter of fact, it, it does the opposite, actually, introduces some more, more, uh, potential, uh, people into the downtown area to help, uh, create a more vibrant, uh, uh, environment. So, now we have to look at, how does this, uh, affect, uh, the, uh, zone plan and zoning ordinance? And, and the key here is, it cannot substantially impair the intent and purpose of this own, and zoning ordinance. So, uh, I looked at, uh, your, your master plan, also I looked at your, uh, twenty-twenty-four, uh, uh, reexamination report, and to be frank with you, uh, I find that, uh, this proposal, uh, will, um, uh, not only, uh, help promote that some of the goals, but also, uh, meet some of the, uh, intent for the, uh, downtown area. So back in two thousand and seven, there was a reexamination report, uh, and it focused in on revitalizing Mount Holly's Central Business District. And that was an earlier goal that was carried forward, and then in twenty-twenty-four, that same goal, uh, is, is recognized, uh, in, in that document. Now, and also, the twenty-twenty-four reexamination report, uh, had a set of, uh, of, uh, recommended planning changes. And it repeat the revitalized Mount Holly's downtown, um, but it also, uh, talked about, uh, revising the, the vision, uh, of, of the, the master plan for, for the municipality. And, uh, I'm going to read some sections from that would, I think, speak directly to what we're proposing tonight. Existing town centers throughout the country are experiencing a renaissance. More young people, single household, empty nesters, and young families are looking to invest in compact, mixed-use communities. High gas prices and a focus on carbon footprint reduction have motivated people to seek more efficient, sustainable lifestyles. Historic places like Mount Holly offer an authentic sense of place that cannot be found in new towns and developments. So there is a goal that's provided in that document, and that is, uh, goal number two, the facility development of a vibrant, thriving downtown core. And, uh, goal, uh, number two-point-four specifically says, "Support mixed-use redevelopment to attract new residents and radables downtown." And this is exactly what this application does. So, in my opinion, uh, this does not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan or zoning warrants. Actually, it helps implement. So, in summary, I believe the, uh, uh, density variance can be granted, uh, given all the, uh, that the site, uh, promotes the purposes and intent of municipal land use law, is particularly suited site for what we're proposing. Uh, it doesn't have, it, it, it impair, uh, the zone planning and zoning warrants, it has no substantial detriment to the public good.
Do you have any questions for him?
Outside. Um, so, the parking at Paxton Street, so there is available parking for overnight parking if they can't find a spot on, on High Street?
Yes, yes. I, I went through the, uh, uh, ordinance, uh, and there's a parking section in, in the ordinance, and it specifically calls out the, uh, the lots that are, have no overnight parking.
Right.
And these have no overnight parking.
Right.
This one is not included in the, that restriction.
And the parking will be available, it's like, not everybody else will go, go, go there and park overnight, or?
Yeah, well, it's, it's the same condition that you have now. You have a mix of residential apartments over there. And every time I visited, and, and this isn't, this is a typical scenario, you know, you, you've got your spattering of cars here.
Right.
During the daytime, and in the evening, uh, there's even less cars. And I, I've traveled there in the evening as well.
Maybe this would be better to Mr. Little, um?
Sure.
I don't know if he has any questions for Mr. Anderson.
So regarding the parking, I actually took quite a bit, you know, took a look at it. So behind the local, that, um, that lot is about seventy units, behind the municipal building is ten. I didn't look at the number behind Village Idiot. Um, all of it in the High Street, which is in front of the business on both sides of High Street, is about twenty units. It's all two to nine, I mean, nine to six, um, Monday to Friday, uh, you know. So what we're saying here is that the expectation is that the tenants will leave, and then the, then the office workers or retail customers will, will then have those spots. But, uh, you also have Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, um, you know, events where now there would be more competition for those, for those same spots. Now, uh, each, each unit, if you have, you know, pretty much everyone has two working incomes into every unit, so that's realistically two cars per, per apartment. Right now, you're using four. There would be four for the third floor, and there would be another four for the second floor. It seems like quite a few of the, uh, the properties on High Street are coming, and it seems like it's, it, quite a few of the properties on High Street are coming before this, this, uh, board, looking to do exactly what you're doing, convert all office, um, space to, um, apartments. And to my knowledge, there's been no study done by this township as to how many, um, uh, how many apartments we have, how many, uh, you know, uh, parking spots would be, uh, needed for each one of those, those apartments. And at some point, you know, with all this office conversion to apartments, as much as it is a very beneficial use as far as, uh, preventing sprawl, you know, and, and things like that, um, the reality is, is there is a parking issue. And, uh, and that's, that is to the point where a building directly across the street from yours, there was, they, they were denied the first time around until we addressed that parking issue. Paxton Street is maybe a thousand feet away, so you're, it is a very quick walk, if you're going out the front door and out the back. Uh, you know, uh, but again, we've had businesses now, we just had a business come in, and that parking lot, which, uh, maybe sixty spots. I did actually count them off for that, that application, I forgot what it is. But we are now accepting applications that we're giving the business the use of parking spots in those, in that Paxton lot, for example. So, uh, customers, customers, um, businesses recently have told me that they definitely don't wanna lose the gravel lot, which was the old Goldies, which is a prime piece of real estate for either development or a park, because customers don't wanna walk back to the municipal parking lot, and definitely not to the county lot. So, any, any, any hit to the parking, you know, is, can't be considered beneficial for the existing retail, you know, uh, businesses.
But, but the, but this would reduce, if you had office space there, you would have more office space during the times that they're worried about. You'd have more people in office space using, you, you look here at the end of that building, you could have four, you'd have eight, uh, probably, people parking during the period of time already. So this actually reduces the number of parking, and it shifts a lot of the parking to overnight, where the businesses aren't concerned.
Now, office space, you were referring to the actual workers in the office, let's say, eight hours, right?
Yes.
They can't, they can't park in any of the two-hour limited parking spots, which means all office workers would actually either have to come back and forth and move their car, which I hear some of them actually, all right? Or they need to use the county lots, you know, so, you know, as far as offsetting the office workers, they wouldn't be using those two-hour parking spots anyhow. So, because unless they're coming out and moving, and that's, you're, you're not realistic.
It's the same thing for the apartments, they wouldn't be using that space, the two-hour parking, unless they were gonna come in for, you know, lunch or something, you know, come home for lunch. They, they're gonna be using spaces for overnight.
Well, I'm just addressing directly what you stated. I'm not, I'm, you know, so, your statement was that the office workers are using those spots, and they're two-hour spots, so mine, mine come back to you on that, was no. The office workers, realistically, will, would be using the long-term parking, which would be the municipal parking lot or the county parking lot, where they're allowed to, to park that's not posted for the, the jurist or whatnot. So, you know, you know, you can come back to that, but that doesn't know, you know, that doesn't cancel out whatever, you know, the point, which is the office workers, your point that you're making is it saves on office workers needing to use those spots. But those office workers, that's no, they're, they're gonna be not using those lots anyhow. But it's about, you know, getting back to it, uh, we can throw it out, but I know that I've heard so much about, you know, um, the parking issue in downtown, and again, uh, I'll hammer it down. It's such a, a big deal that we are allowing a corner lot to stay gravel, to, to help out the parking, the parking situation. So if there was so much abundant parking available, you know, nine to five, all day long, we certainly wouldn't have that valuable piece of real estate, you know, sitting there as gravel parking lot, and have businesses happy, and they want that, you know, so there definitely is a blocking issue. That's my first concern. My second concern is, uh, as we keep adding to these, you know, these, these, uh, these apartments, um, I never hear it brought up anymore, uh, but I asked how many, you know, children were in that, the one apartment on the, uh, on the third floor, the two-bedroom apartment, there's two.
Just so, just so you know, that's not a valid.
That's not a valid issue, you can't discuss how.
No, you can't really discriminate against people.
Well, when, when that development, right. I want to sit there, and I'll actually, you know, because, um, years ago, when the Mount Holly redevelopment came before us, the thing, one of the things that was actually in that application was the input, the impact on the school system. They came out with some bogus number eighty-seven, uh, students for four-hundred-and-twenty-eight units, but that's, doesn't, doesn't, but the point, the point is, is that in the past, the, the impact to the school system was brought out. So you're saying that's changed, or is it just to, for larger apartment complexes?
I can't speak to what you looked at, 'cause I really don't know which document you're looking at. I do know that when they look at certain master plans or redevelopment sections, they do look at various sections. But when you look at one particular application and note the occupancy levels, and you specifically talk about children, that's kind of not, that should open the board up to some.
So, so if I may go back and, and, and talk about the parking. Um, your, your twenty-twenty-four reexamination report ma- makes no, no comment or concern or issue about parking. So, um, I, I understand your, your, your position, um, but, uh, there, according to your official So I understand your, your position, but according to your official documents, there is no shortage or parking issue in downtown Mount Holly. And that's, that's what I go by. As a professional planner, I have to look at what your concerns are and those concerns are supposed to be reflected in your reexamination report. It does not state anything. And to be honest with you, the, it sounds like the gravel lot, the Goldies' debate is a matter of convenience, not because there's as stressed parking. And so I, I was the director of economic development for regional plan for Burlington County for twenty five years until I retired in twenty twenty. And I spent a lot of my time in Mount Holly. When I first came here in ninety five, the downtown used to be much more vibrant and had much more parking demand. And so much so that there were struggles between the township and the county about parking, which finally got resolved. Thirty, thirty years later, the parking issues are not even close to what they used to be back in ninety five. And to be honest with you, I don't see a major parking issue at all. And the characteristics of parking with the residents, their demand is in the evening, when there's less activity and parking demand. And during the day, it would be wonderful to have a parking problem. That means that more and more people are visiting Mount Holly to patronize your shops and restaurants and things like that, which quite frankly is a goal of your master plan to get, become more vibrant. And so the goal of the master plan is to have, and I read it to you, mixed use development, get more people in the downtown, more people living in the downtown. And so to be frank with you, I heard what your opinion was, but I don't, I see this anecdotal and I don't see any, any concrete evidence of a parking issue.
Mr. Runcit, can I ask you a question, just as far as the parking quotient? The application is to, for the density variance as to.
Yes.
But there's also a request for a bulk variance as to parking.
Yes.
There's an existing, if I understand the application, the current conditions now, there's an existing business that doesn't have on-site parking.
Correct.
So anything you add to it is going to require a bulk variance just for the parking, right?
Yes, and it's related to the RSIS requirement.
Right. And so I think if I heard you right, that the proposed use has a lesser of a parking demand than an office use or restaurant or a manufacturing, is that?
That is correct. It not only has it less, less intensive, it also, the temporal during the day, evening when there's less parking demand and then during the day when there's more parking demand and an office would be challenging for the, for the parking during the day.
Yeah, so I'm looking at your square footage. Apartment A is basically a thousand square feet, so a two hundred, one spot for two hundred, that's five, right there. The other one's twelve eighty, so that's another six. So you're talking sixteen spaces, right?
Office space, yes. Yeah, yes, thank you, yes. You're, you're correct.
Not to mention customers.
Yes, a person's patronizing the business, that is absolutely correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's usually a question.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for the swifts?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, that to speak to you.
Have we satisfied all of your questions?
I guess I should, did we talk about what the bulk variance was?
Well, the bulk variance I saw it was the parking variance, but, but your market end is the minimums variance. So that was.
The parking.
Yes, that was the parking from my perspective, but you did your report, no called it the minimums, so I'm like, all right, it's the minimums, all right.
Well, that's the RSIS terminology.
Rick, since you got the ball started, do you, do you mind just rolling through your letter and make sure?
Well, I mean, it really addressed all the comments in my letter. I guess the only other question that I might have would be, you showed the area where the trash and recycling was and you mentioned that there was a light on the upstairs. Is there a light near the, near the trash, so someone's taking their trash out at night? Does it do that safely?
Sorry?
Is there a light near, down near the trash?
Uh, yes, I, oh, there's a street lamp, actually, that's provided by the town. I think it's kind of, it's just.
As if, as if the street lamp was taking the picture, almost.
Right on the edge of the parking lot. And if you're coming from the second floor, there's that, that light.
I absolutely would add a light if necessary, yes.
Yeah, you already testified, no, no changes to the utilities, no changes to the exterior of the building, correct?
Nope, correct.
Maybe there were submission waivers, we didn't go through, I didn't have any issues with any submission waivers.
So Rick, Rick, so Rick, you did, you did, you, you, there was a, you did do a request for a survey waiver, okay? And, and the reason we didn't get a survey was because we couldn't get a survey during time. But if you're not, we think we provided all the information needed. However, if you, if you need the survey, we will have it before the next, we have it before approval at the next meeting. We have a scheduled appointment for the August sixth, I believe?
The next Friday.
I was okay with that.
Yeah, I think you're, give us.
We've got a tax map information, it's kind of.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then as an additional approval, of course, we will fix that drawing to have the door in the right place and then have the pointer, which is emergency, point to the right door.
So there's one other thing I guess I'm going to say, which I don't think the board was thinking about it, but we're talking about the timing of parking around that area. Everybody at this board probably knows that the old Mount Holly State Bank is being converted to courthouse facility. Eventually, it'll become Mount Holly Courthouse and the hours of operation will be probably six o'clock to nine o'clock. So there will be a little bit of a conflict at that time in that area for parking.
But I also assume that's going to remain remote, it's been removed. Every, you just apparently right here, does municipal court remove still?
Yeah, I don't know that. This meeting probably will be there in the future, I think.
That's the, that's the Bank of America building?
I think that's the old Bank of America.
That's not public parking as is, right? I mean, I don't think people use that. Do people use that Bank of America parking currently? What I mean is that there are Bank of America spots there.
Plus, if there's, I'm just saying, if there's a board meeting, it could be a lot.
I'm saying it's not being used currently.
Well, so this is the building they're referring to right here?
Right.
No, that's not right. No, this. I'm in, I'm in my office. I'm at the wrong place. Okay.
You have to go by what is before the board now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, you know. I don't know if you can bring up future conditions, because as much as we can plan on things, I don't think that anybody planned on the other building having an asbestos issue, so.
That's true.
The amount of parking spots there, I just counted it, like half an hour ago, it's about ten. So that, that Bank of America, it's extremely, it's about, yeah, five year and six years, five and seven. So everything will overflow into the lot behind the local, which is seventy units. I think it's like forty on one side and fifty on the other. So that's the overflow there with the.
Okay, so in conclusion, I think that we presented all the evidence of just required in order to give the use variance and the bulk variance granted and we requested the board do so.
Just for the applicant's knowledge, this is a density variance, and as I understand the application is for residential units, which are all market rate units, correct?
Correct.
So that this is new residential development, which would be subject to the affordable housing contribution, but because all four of the units are dense, enhanced density, the rate goes from one point five to six percent of the increased value of the improvements. It's not overall, so it, I mean, it's, it's less of an impact if you were building up from the ground, but I just want to say that's such a greater impact than the regular one point five percent. And you would agree to obtain all required permits, get all required approvals, submit the corrected plans, no changes to the utilities or exterior?
Correct.
You are going to correct the one drawing?
We're going to correct one drawing, we'll get that in, in about any week.
So your, any motion? Oh, oh, yes, that's right. Are there any comments from the public at this time on this application specifically? I'm going to get the microphone, please say your name and address correctly.
Jeff Eversmar, two oh three Broad Street, Mount Holly.
Mr. Eversmar, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I did. It seems like it'd be a good fit for Mount Holly with residential itself. And I assume that they're going to be, that building's going to be in compliance with all Mount Holly laws and regulations.
It would be, you asked me.
My next question would be, is there's been an issue with the sign on the front of the building and perhaps it's never been addressed or nobody's come to the, to change it, but I know my wife's son's story was on historic preservation, one of the things that was illegal on the, on the sign, there were no lighting signs on the buildings, which the fellow building, fellow building has a lighting sign. The other thing was, I believe, the ground had a, and a pot beaker or something on the sign, which is on that side. It's been brought before the township multiple times by residents and there's been no corrective action to the signs on the building. So since he's a part owner, maybe we can make it a condition that that sign does get corrected and follow the ordinances and laws of Mount Holly Township that are already on the books. On that, I don't really see anything, you know, against, you know, making it a better place for how I live. Originally, we're going to build, put something upstairs, some retail shop. I think this is a better fit, but I would like to see, and the residents, because during the election, that seemed like a big thing, that the residents were a little upset that that was a glaring sign in an historic district and it was against the ordinances of Mount Holly.
Sir, I don't know whether it is or not, I've been told that it's within yours, but that's, that's between school and the township. We've rented the space to them, they applied to the township to get a sign permit and that was either approved or something, I don't know.
This is not an enforcement entity, this is, and it's not part of the application. So if there's, if there's a non-conforming sign, you bring that to the attention of the township and they'll, they'll review whether, their zoning officer will review whether or not it complies and deal with it. They also have to comply with CRC, but this is not an enforcement entity and we can impose, and I understand what you're saying, you can impose a condition on off-site properties that will be an off-site condition, which is not, not permitted under the municipal land use law.
Okay, well, at least I made it clear, including your tenant, you go back to your tenant, said possibly today would want to make the residents in Mount Holly feel a little bit better about the business in your, one of your thoughts.
I have a conversation with him. Any other public comments on this application? Please say your name and address correctly.
David, Realville one sixty six, Trent Conkers Road.
Mr. Biald, do you swear?
I swear, yes, ma'am.
Let me finish.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for opening the mic, I appreciate that, Madam Esquire. My concern is we're assuming a lot of things. We're assuming that those two apartments, which why can't that be just one apartment? It'll still bring in income, but we're assuming those two apartments are only going to have an amount of people in it, when I've noticed that a lot of apartments have five, six, seven, eight people. I live not too far where there's a house that has six, seven people living in it and they have four cars each, five cars each. So we assume, as, as the Madam Esquire said, let's not assume. So, you know, the other thing I'm concerned about, if there are a lot of people, I don't see the adequate fire places or fire exits that they can come out of. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. I haven't seen the drawings, so I can't really question that right off the top of my head. But I also remind, as Richard brought up, which I had written previously, that across the street on top of Vino sixty one, they had denied a gentleman from getting approval for having residents on his building. He came in, he made his presentation, they denied him for various reasons and parking was one of them and there was several others. So we should take that into consideration because if we allow that to happen, issue's going to come back to the board and say, can I put that up there? And, you know, we're setting precedence here, we can't really say no because this, that or the other. So, you know, there are things that I would call your attention to that needs to be taken into consideration before we make the final approval. As far as parking, there's no guarantee that he's only going to bring two cars or one car in. As far as the people concerned, there's no guarantee that it's going to bring in two people, three people in. And again, Mr. Richard brought up some good points that are concerning. I also want to recommend for the gentleman in the corner, I don't know his name, right here in front of me, and I apologize, you caught an error in the, in the description and that was very good, so I commend you on that and thank you. That's due diligence and I appreciate that, so thank you so much. I take, just hope that you consider it a little more. Thank you.
Just, just for the board's reference, I would caution you that any approval or whatever you decide to do would be subject to approval by the fire marshal in terms of occupancy, exits and so forth. Also, I hear this frequently, that there's an argument of you're setting a precedent on one property and each application is taken on its own merits. So because you denied or approved some, one thing at one location, doesn't bind you to have the same decision in another one. This board's very sensitive and you take the time to really, you know, delve into the facts, but, so you're not setting any precedent here.
Any other public comments at this time on this application? All right, seeing none. Let's close the discussion on this application. Should we, do you want to read the condition or should?
So it wasn't clear on whether you needed the survey or not, is that?
No.
That's what I thought, okay. So the applicant had, had requested certain submission waivers, which have been supported by the board's professionals based upon the testimony as provided. Mr. Little has provided testimony as to various aspects of the proposed way in which the property will be configured. He's testified that there are going to be no changes necessary to the utilities, the property already has upstairs units which have access to them, no changes to the exterior. They've agreed to revise the drawing to show the correct location of the drawer. Any approvals, as indicated on Mr. Alimo's letter, will be subject to the entities having the jurisdiction over, over the property, including the fire official, the board's planner, fire code official and the NUA. They have acknowledged the affordable housing obligation for new development. They testified as to the placement of additional trash and recycling areas if necessary. The board's professionals think that some type of light, perhaps a motion sensor light or not, is necessary if you believe that's necessary. They've agreed to work with the board's planner on that. And you've heard the testimony of, the operational testimony of Mr. Little and the explanations of the various exhibits provided, but then also the testimony of Mr. Remza, and this is a D three variance. And he's provided testimony about the purposes of municipal land use law, but also the township's master plan reexamination report, and he's taken a look at the zoning laws and so forth. So you can find from the testimony whether or not they've met the burden for the D three density variance. It's not a use variance per se, albeit some members are not eligible, the mayor's not eligible vote, but it's not a use variance per se in a different way in that it's, it's not a three ring circus in a residential zone. It's not, it's a, it's a use, as Mr. Remza cited, which is, he feels compatible with other uses in the downtown area. We have business office on the bottom floor and then residential. We have business office on the bottom floor and then residential up top. The parking variance that we've talked about is actually, from what the professionals have said, is a de minimis relief, it's a waiver, design waiver from the RSIS as far as providing parking on site for tenants. So you can, you'd also have to grant relief for that, and then the, the board's professionals have also, um, supported the idea of relief from the requirement to submit a minor site plan. So those are the three essential aspects of the relief. The relief from the minor site plan, having to submit that, the RSIS waiver for the parking, but then also the D3, I'm sorry, D5, um, density variance. Based upon the testimony and, and, and the conditions as stated, for the use variances, I always suggest that you do a motion, even if you don't want it, vote against, I always say, do a motion in favor of it, so that if it's a motion to deny, you don't lose all the, and that fails, you don't lose all the conditions. So, is there a motion to approve based upon the testimony that, that has been provided, basically, you doubt Mr. Remsa's opinion, uh, and the conditions as stated? To approve the use variance, RSIS relief, and the waiver of site plan. Is there motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Kennedy, 75, Mrs. SCA?
All those in favor, say aye. All right. No, we have to do a little, I'm sorry, do a few pieces of time.
Mr. Dow?
No.
Jonathan Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Bryce Shaven?
Yes. Mr. Kennedy?
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
And Parker?
Yes.
So it's 5-1, the variance relief was approved.
Right. Mr. Carries, thank you. That concludes the proceedings presented in 6062 High Street. We will now move on to, yeah, no, we don't have to.
We're all ready? Wait for that board member. Should we wait for that board member to come to us?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, I'm John Adams. Again, I am the, uh, representing Highland Holdings, I'm from John Adams Law Firm, and I'm also, um, the owner of Highland Holdings, uh, which is where my law office is, which is the John Adams Law Firm. So I'll be explaining, um, what's going on, what I want to do here, and I will have, again, Mr. Remsa is my, is my planner expert, which will repeat a lot of testimony that you've already heard. So, I think Mr. Remsa started being sworn, so I think a lot of you can be sworn.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I did.
Did you, did you retain Mr. Remsa?
I did, yes.
Smart move, okay. Mr. Remsa, you're still under oath.
I am, thank you.
And I believe you're still qualified as an expert in Mount Holly.
Yes, my license hasn't changed since a few moments ago.
In the last seventeen minutes?
Yes, thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to follow Mr. Remsa's lead here and move this mic and be sure I can show you, uh, sort of what's going on and what I'd like to do. So, Highland Holdings is the owner of, of, um, lot 52, excuse me, lot 54, and you can see that it's, it's right here. Uh, it's very small, and the building mostly takes up the entire, entire space, other than a back stairway, that we'll show you in the back. You see here, there's a back, there's a back entrance to the second floor, and, uh, basically, that lane ends right here, uh, right here at the, at the, at that, at that stairway. This is the front of the building, uh, you've probably all seen it, it's a couple buildings up from the coffee shop. I, I, I showed you this picture here for no other reason, uh, and this is looking towards this window from the inside. Uh, this is a beautiful space, I mean, it's absolutely gorgeous, it's got hardwood floors all throughout. Uh, the intent here is to convert this into an apartment, uh, and, um, eventually, I plan to live there, so I'm going to make this a nice place. Uh, so, um, my, my intent here is at some point, my wife will retire, uh, and when she retires, uh, she then wants to spend most of her time in Florida with her grandchildren. Uh, but I have an active law practice, uh, so I'll be spending a lot of time up here, but, uh, well, when I'm up here, I would, I would be living in, 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 uh, in these two floors, uh, and, uh, and then I would fly back in Florida to Florida. Uh, but in, but in the meantime, I'd like to be able to rinse it out until that time comes. So, uh, that's sort of the overview of the plan. This is, this is the, uh, the existing floor plan, uh, how things are. My law firm is right in, in this space right here. Um, you walk in the main door, you go here, there's a door right here. I've converted this into a conference room, okay? My office is here, and that's storage. And then there's a bathroom right here, I wasn't going to show you, but there's a bathroom right there. So, uh, you're basically, I'm not, I'm not there very much. I go there a couple times a week, pick up mail, but I have to have a place, and then when I have to, you know, a place, I need a nice place, uh, to meet my clients, and so that's why I have this big nice conference room, right here, okay? Uh, and that's where I meet them, and that's what that's for. Uh, but that doesn't happen very much, uh, so, um, I actually work from my home most of the time, uh, but I do go there two or three times a week, and I do pick up, um, and when I do have meetings, I, that's, that's where I, that's where I have them. So nobody's there generally for most of the period of time. When I convert that into my space, I probably would still just be upstairs someplace during that period of time, but, uh, but, uh, that's the, that's the concept. You, you saw in the, in the, uh, in this drawing right here, uh, the trash, um, there is, um, let me just talk for a second. So, I have three trash canes, that's a trash can, that's a trash, and that's the recycling. Uh, just to show you how much trash and recycling I've used, uh, I've done the recycle, I've been there for fifteen months, I've taken the recycling out twice, and the trash out twice. Uh, in fact, I just did, uh, not this time, this time before. I do not believe I'll need any more, uh, than this, but if I do, I'll get, uh, whatever extra is needed, uh, for the, for the apartment. So the real plan out here deals with, uh, the second and third floors. All of the u, the utilities, the water, sewage, come up this wall right here in these bathrooms, okay? So... So when you're looking at the, the second floor, I'm going to put in a one bedroom, or a half-bath, uh, right here, uh, right above almost, uh, the, I'm going to cramp my hand, I'm sorry. Thanks, I hurt you. So we put in a half-bath right here, uh, this is a, um, it's going to be a pantry, a pantry way, uh, and then the, um, dishwasher sink will be right here, there'll be a stove over here, so that all these things come up right here. Uh, we're going to take out part of this wall right here to open it up some. This part of the wall's going to remain, and that's because there's a radiator right there, which is to stay, but then this will be the, like, the dining area, and then we're going to take a little bit of these walls out over here to open this up a little bit, uh, and you've already seen, you know, what a view that is, and these hall, hallway here is all wood floors, uh, all this is all wood floors, um, half-bath right here, uh, this will be a beautiful window. Uh, you go up the stairway right here into the third floor, uh, this is really not changing at, at all, the rooms are staying pretty much the way they are, except for a slight variation here. Uh, that'll be one bedroom, that'll be the other bed, that'll be the other bedroom. This right here, um, this, which could be a bedroom, I'm going to make, turn into a laundry, okay? So I, I have a laundry in the third floor with, you know, with the, um, with your clothes. Uh, so, um, in, um, I, I may need to open this doorway up right here a little bit, um, just to, just to, uh, just so you can get in there, the washer and dryer's not in there. Uh, but that's the concept plan there, uh, three bed, the two bedrooms, and then laundry storage here, there's already a bathroom here, uh, these are all old Rome homes, um, so it's, it's already got a bathroom, it's got a, it's got a tub, uh, it's got a, so none of that's changed, it's, it's existing how it is.
Mr. Adams, the, the document you were just referring to, is that your Exhibit B?
Okay, let me...
Which, which, which of the photos, from A?
Let me, I'm, I'm going to apologize, because I pre-marked it, and it goes the exact same way as my submission did.
Okay.
So this is Exhibit A, which is the drawings, okay? Uh, I have not shown you Exhibit D yet, which is, I'm giving you a pardon. This one is Exhibit D, which has the survey, you know, and the lot plan on there. You can see it's a pretty small lot, it's only a thousand square feet, and then, uh, this is Exhibit C, and there are just some photos. I did want to mention, uh, because I believe, uh, one of the, uh, one of the, um, professionals mentioned this, there is a small alleyway right here, you can see it, uh, it's about thirty inches wide, uh, it, it's not used for anything other than for taking my trash from the back to the front, uh, it's the only thing, uh, I use it for, and I'll show you another diagram. The way you would get to the back of this building is not down this alleyway to, you would, you would come off the side street. There's, uh, there's three driveways, uh, to come off the side street, and in that, then on Exhibit D here, you'll see. Exhibit D, and this has been pre-marked, this, this is the building right here, uh, there's a driveway here, there's a driveway here, uh, and there's a driveway here, uh, and all those lead to this back parking lot, okay? There's a floodlight, um, you can actually see it on Exhibit C right here, there's a floodlight right here, uh, which is motion-sensitive, you know, activated, uh, which lights up this whole backyard, uh, when somebody moves it. Uh, there's also another floodlight right here that does the same, but I would probably still install another light right here above that door. So the apartment's square size is fourteen hundred square feet, uh, which is, um, which is less, which is, which exceeds the minimum of eight hundred and fifty for a two-bedroom apartment. I'm going to have Mr. Remsa testify, but I just wanted to do this before I do it, just talk a little bit about the parking, and I think he's going to talk about here. Uh, so this right here, some of these parking spots here are marked, uh, reserved for, for some of these office spaces, but there are ten parking spaces right here that are unmarked, uh, and there's parking on the, um, there's two-hour parking on this, on this street right here, uh, but there, there's a overnight parking, and, and as soon as you get up here to prison, it, uh, the, the parking permits are gone, there's no more two-hour parking, there's no, this is overnight parking for both of those.
Is that a municipal lot?
This, I don't know, I don't know, I, I'm going to tell you what I was told, right? But I was told that there's an easement for all these people to be back here, okay? Uh, it's only, it's only, I was told that by, by, by Bender Gray, who is the attorney next to me, she said that, uh, all these, uh, these places, and that's why you can't have any markings on some of these little spaces over here. So, there's ten spaces back here, uh, and then there's, uh, if, there's overnight parking here and here, but there's two-hour here in the day, and then as you move up, uh, right up here, it becomes, there's no two-hour limit, and there's no overnight limit on there. The, the ordinance would, we, we, we require two parking spaces. Uh, right now, uh, the previous occupants, uh, they, they, they were occupying with, uh, with ten spaces, uh, that they had ten offices, correct here in this drawing here. They had two people here, person here, they had four on the first floor, and then they had three on each floor, um, after that. So this would reduce the, um, the amount of, of, of parking needed, uh, and as I said, at some point, um, it would be myself residing here. Be no changes in the utilities, we're serviced by, 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 uh, public water, public sewage, public gas, uh, cable, and you know that, um, I already described all the piping and stuff, it was up the same wall, and I'd concentrate that, this, in that area, so there'd be, uh, less of that to have to worry about. Mr. Remsa? Any other questions for me? If I turn it over, if I go to Mr. Remsa? Mr. Remsa? Oh, there he is.
Rick asked a good question about how, how do you get back to that, uh, back parking lot, so I'm going to point that out in a moment. So the property in question is Lot 53, Lot 54, uh, eleven, uh, 111 High Street, um, the lot area is approximately a thousand square feet. Uh, it's currently in the OB Office Building zoning district, and its surrounding land uses consist of offices to the north, parking lot to the east, more offices to the south and, and to the west. So, uh, it's clearly a, 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 a office-centric, uh, land use pattern there. So I'm going to go over to Exhibit B. So, the property here is, well, pointing with the red arrow, but what's interesting is off of Garden Street, there's actually a public railway that gets to that back parking lot. They knew something many, many years ago when this whole area started to develop, because this whole row here, uh, consists mostly what used to be formerly Rome homes, you know, they're cheek-to-jowl, uh, wall-to-wall, except for this thirty-inch alleyway to get your trash out, but, uh, to get to this parking area that's shared with, uh, the uses back here, uh, the office uses, including John's property, it's actually a ten-foot rideaway coming off of, um, off of Garden Street to get back in there. So the proposal, as you heard, um, is a reasonably good-sized, uh, two-floor, uh, single apartment, uh, John, two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, uh, and it far exceeds the, the minimum that's required for the two-bedroom. So, in, in the, um, OB zone, um, it permits, uh, not only offices, but different conditional uses, so, so we're, we're in a different category here now of, of variance, uh, because the conditional, um, use actually contemplates, uh, apartments over, over residential, and according to the ordinance, you can go up to four units above the commercial or office space. So it says here, uh, "Not more than four dwelling use may be established in conjunction with any one non-residential use." So, so in that term, John's application is compliant with, with the ordinance, however, if the conditional use standards... However, if the conditional use standards provide that, you have to meet the minimum, uh, uh, site, uh, standard requirements. That means the lot, uh, uh, size, setbacks, um, uh, width and so on. And I'll go through that, uh, with you in a moment. So, what, what the OB zoning district relies on, however, is R-two residential zoning requirements. It's unusual that you have an office district here, but they want you to comply with the minimum site and bulk standards for, for residential. And quite frankly, none of the lots along this stretch comply with any of the R-two. Not just this property, but all, all of them, that entire row, because, uh, this row of homes was probably built in the mid-nineteenth century. Is, is that what you found, John?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so this is a very, very old home, uh, originally, that was converted to, to offices some time, time ago. So, by applying the R-two zoning district standards, the maximum building height is two and a half stories or thirty-five feet. Well, John's property was built as three stories. Uh, minimum front yard setback, thirty-five feet. Typical for residential, but in this case, it's built right to the street line, zero. Minimum side yard, eight feet, uh, uh, and two sides, thirty-five percent of a lot width. So actually, the setbacks are zero, because it's typical row home. Uh, rear yard setback, uh, thirty-five feet, that's required in the R-two zone. In this case, it was built to nine feet. Uh, lot size, seventy-two hundred square feet, and existing is just a little over a thousand square feet. And there's no way to expand, uh, and make the lot, lot larger. Lot frontage, sixty feet, this, uh, this lot is twenty-two feet wide. And, uh, as I said, um, the requirement for two bedrooms is eighty, eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet. It were fourteen hundred to fourteen hundred square feet. So, in essence, we have, uh, a conditional use variance for the one condition of not meeting the R-two, uh, minimum, uh, bulk and, and lot size requirements. And we also have, uh, RSIS design exception as well, uh, where, uh, the, uh, under residential site proven standards, uh, two, uh, two onsite parking spaces are required. Uh, there are no onsite parking spaces. John relies on, uh, the parking, uh, in the back, as well as, um, he, uh, would be, the tenants or residents would be able to, uh, park, um, uh, on the street, uh, after hours, or where they could use the, the lot in the back as well. So, the legal proofs for, um, uh, conditional use variance are a little different than the, uh, D-five zone for density, uh, 'cause this, we're, we're, there is no density requirement here. Um, so what we have to do is look at the Coventry Square case, which has a specific, uh, criteria for, uh, meeting the legal proofs. So one is, does this application pertain to a particular property? Absolutely, pertains to, uh, One-One-One High Street, uh, consisting of, uh, the three floors, uh, where we have, uh, law office on the first, and wanting to convert, uh, the upper two floors, uh, essentially back to, to residential as it was probably originally built. Um, but we also have to see, does this promote, uh, the intended purpose of the municipal and use law? And I believe it does. I will, uh, quote, uh, or paraphrase from the, uh, different purposes from NJSA forty, call him fifty-five, D-dash-two, uh, and I'll give you the small letter. So, uh, first one is G, and that's, it provides sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. In this case, we're providing mixed-use residential over, uh, office. And that, as a matter of fact, the, uh, O-B zone actually contemplates residential over office. Uh, I promote a desirable visual environment. Uh, the, uh, a very attractive exterior of the building will be maintained. Nothing will be, be changed, all the changes will be in the interior. A J, uh, that is to, uh, prevent urban sprawl and, and, uh, degradation of the environment through the proper use of land. Again, we have, uh, underutilized upper, uh, office space, uh, and, uh, as we're seeing, that it's becoming more and more difficult to, to lease office space on upper floors, uh, in, in, uh, these, these types of older settings. In this case, um, uh, it would be the efficient, uh, uh, proper use of land, uh, to, to, uh, convert. M, also, uh, the development to create more efficient use of land, similar, uh, uh, points of reusing the empty office space would be efficient use of land and, and actually, uh, addressing the, uh, uh, OB zone, which contemplates residence over, uh, office. And then, uh, A, to, uh, guide municipal action, uh, that will promote the general public health, safety, morals and general welfare. And given those foregoing purposes, I believe that this application advances also, would advance this one. Uh, so, uh, we need to look at, um, uh, site suitability is not necessarily, uh, required under, uh, the Coventry test, but certainly, uh, uh, the accommodation of, of this, uh, property to convert the upper office space into, uh, residential, uh, i- is, uh, is evident. So the negative criteria, so we have to look at, uh, what kind of negative effect, if any, uh, this would have on, uh, surrounding properties. Uh, in this case, uh, to the north, uh, I think the additional residents would have no, uh, negative impact on, on, uh, any of the surrounding office space, the north, east, south and, and west, uh, as well as, uh, the ability to, uh, utilize the, uh, existing parking that's available to John on the adjoining property. Uh, and also to see if it has any impairment on the, uh, uh, master plan and, and the zoning ordinance. And again, I'll draw your attention to the twenty-twenty-four reexamination report, uh, where, uh, it talks about encouraging, uh, the revitalization of the downtown district, which this is an extension of, and as well as that one, uh, uh, new goal, uh, goal number two, point four, and that's to support mixed-use redevelopment to attract new residents and rateables in the downtown. And so, uh, uh, I don't see any, uh, negative impact, given that, uh, we can't meet the minimum, uh, uh, lot size and bulk standards. The lot's already there, the building is already there, um, and, uh, it's underutilized now, and, uh, in terms of the ability to, uh, accommodate this proposed use, I believe that, uh, the, um, application, uh, is more, uh, the granting of the application is warranted.
Are you familiar with the, um, the lack of, of living in big places in New Jersey?
Yes, uh, there is a significant, uh, uh, lack of, uh, housing units, uh, in New Jersey, as well as nationwide.
And, and, um, would, would adding an apartment help reduce that?
Uh, adding one more additional unit in a building that could easily accommodate would, would, uh, uh, help towards that.
And are you familiar with the overabundance of office space in the area?
Yes, uh, Burlington County has an overabundance of office space and has, uh, a relatively high vacancy rate of, of touch, getting close to twenty percent.
And this would reduce that vacancy rate?
It would, because it would, uh, it would swap out, uh, office space with, uh, 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 one, one single unit, residential unit.
Okay, um, questions?
I had a question. You, twice now, you've referred to an overabundance of office space in Burlington County?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
What's your source?
Oh, it's, um, uh, it's the, um, uh, trying to remember the, um, the website, the, uh, commercial, um, uh, I'm at a loss at the website right now. It's, it's the one that all the realtors, the commercial realtors use, uh, LoopNet, yes, thank you.
Say again?
LoopNet, LoopNet. L-O-O-P-N-E-T, LoopNet.
LoopNet?
Yes, it's, it's an excellent, uh, excellent, uh, uh, resource.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Do the professionals please go through their checklist, or are you satisfied?
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I submit that the, um, applicant, um, Highland Holdings, has had all the conditions, um, to be approved. We request the charges, thank you.
Oliver, you're absolutely right. Do we have any, uh, comments from the public on this application? Please repeat your name and address when you reach the microphone.
David Vialba, one-six-six Rancancos Road.
Does this word refer to show the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, you got me on that you're planning a little bit of rent relief, and I like that. I think that's part of the, part of the planning board. Your statement is to have more people living that own in the town, instead of renting out. So with that, and I see no problem, it's a great presentation, and I have to admit, when it's something good, it's good. And it was a good presentation, I look forward to being part of the town.
And, uh, I'll just add, the reason I, I, you know, I could have made that two apartments.
I noticed that.
But I, but I'm looking to make something really nice.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to show you that picture of the second floor, looking at that window, that's gonna be a beautiful apartment.
I can imagine, I can imagine, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public on this application? Seeing none, we will close discussion on this application.
So again, uh, you agree, uh, to the conditions that it would be subject to fire and martial, applicable, other entities or agencies having jurisdiction, which is not wholly, uh, any way, um, with respect to affordable housing contribution, some increase in density. Um, I don't think there were any real conditions noted in the review letters. Um, so this is an application for use variance relief, uh, for minor site plan approval, and for de minimis relief from the parking requirements, correct? Um, so based upon the testimony as presented, um, Mr. Adams has provided the, the layout of the sites. He's testified that he could have presented a, a more dense, uh, two-unit, uh, residential area for residential units, but he chose one residence because he wants to reside in and he thinks it's nicer and have less of an impact. Um, and he's presented, uh, testimony of a professional planner, Mr. Remsa, uh, to talk about the positive and negative, uh, criteria. And, and I agree with Mr. Remsa in terms of the Coventry Square. You don't have, uh, standard, it's a famous case in New Jersey. You don't have to show that this site is particularly suited. You just have to show that despite the fact that they don't meet the, the applicant doesn't meet the conditions for the conditional use to be permitted, the site can still accommodate this use. Um, and a lot of the conditions that have been cited are pre-existing conditions that really can't be changed. You can't change where a row house is located unless you wanna, I don't even know that it's large enough that you could move the house backwards and, and it couldn't probably mean any of the setback requirements. So he's presented testimony that, in their opinion, despite the non-conformities, uh, it still accommodates, uh, this, this additional use. Um, we benefit in terms of providing an additional residential unit in a state that has a significant housing shortage, um, and that Mr. Remsa testified that, uh, he thinks it's consistent with various purposes or goals of the NLU. The township's master plan is cited in the, uh, reexamination report. Um, and they've agreed to follow all the usual conditions with respect to contributions and getting all required permits and approvals. So again, because this is a D variance, my suggestion is that you do a motion to approve, uh, the variance relief, the minor site plan, waiver requirement to have to submit that, and approve the parking as proposed, based upon the condition, the minimal conditions I've stated, and the testimony as presented.
All right, subject to those conditions, do we hear a motion to approve the application out before the board?
Motion to approve.
So, all right, Gina Rolto.
Put it down.
No.
Down mine?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
How did you pick those here? Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Kenny?
Yes.
Thank you. It's five-one, so the, uh, application is approved with a reasonable question.
All right, thank you. That concludes the portion of these proceedings concerning the application for One-One-One High Street. We will now move on to the public comment section of the evening. It's very briefly consistent, the Open Public Meetings Act, members of the public are led to submit comments during the public comment portion of this meeting. The public comment section is an opportunity for citizens to share their opinions and concerns of board about matters which will later be discussed. While the discussion of the topic by which the speaker will be limited to three minutes, per the current citizen's speaking. No parties may repeat more than once on this same topic, though all of us who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. The board deserves the right, whether public discussion is maybe appropriate in a management system, with the Open Public Meetings Act. Not all issues brought before the board at a meeting will be addressed at a particular meeting. Concerns raised or actions suggested by the public can be taken under a decision by the board for a due discussion or to be acted upon at a later date or time, or the issue may be referred to be appropriate at any court's review. Please note that if a pro per application is not listed on the board's agenda for action, or if the matter is adjourned to another meeting date, it cannot be discussed by the board during the public comments, because the applicant has not been given notice of the discussion and does not have the opportunity to respond to comments made by members of the public. That in mind, are there any members of the public who wish to offer comments at this time? Please repeat your name and address when you reach the microphone.
Yes, sir. David Vialba, uh, one-six-six Rancancos Road. Is Warren in?
No.
Okay. I'd like to mention, uh, we had a, or the citizens took action in the Grant Street cleanup, on Grant Street on the back. We tried calling a few times. There was a little area reserved, I think, uh, Frank Bantian had it, but, uh, Tony County and the Conservatory Board for him. Um, we tried to get the town involved in it, uh, but there are plans still ahead. Uh, we'd like to know if, uh, the planning board is gonna participate in any of those. Um, trying to continue to move forward, clean that area up. It's behind Grant, it's behind Rancancos. Um, they have a sidewalk there, so that part of the sidewalk was part of the town. It should have been cleaned that up. Sadly, it, uh, hasn't. But I agree, I think if we all work together, we definitely move forward on making the town a better area, making the town. The other thing I have is the planning board, there's a couple of houses in the town that really dilapidated. Um, for example, the ones that are on fire on Grant Street, there is garbage outside run and there's garbage in the back. I offered, and I'm willing and I'm sure I could get people, uh, to volunteer to clean it up. I don't wanna get paid for it, I'll be more than happy to clean it up, uh, cut down their grass, make it, uh, look nice. Again, very presentable, there's no problem, I've done that for other people and offered my services. Um, but we may wanna look into that, there's still garbage and it's been a while since it's been done. There's also a building on Rancancos Road across the street from the, the grocery store on the corner of King Street and Rancancos, Kitty Cat to, uh, Butch Bar, I guess it was, that, um, or next to it, I should say, that a car went into it and is still in poor condition. As a planning board, I think that we should kind of address those things. And the other thing that I have in mind, a question is, what are we doing with, uh, fourteen King Street as a planning board? Have we, are we still, is there a planning agenda out there? Is there something that we can look into the future? As far as restaurants, retail, anything that's gonna come into the area that we can address? Is there a plan?
This board hears applications brought before, redevelopment initiatives are done by the council. Same thing with the cleanups, things of that nature.
Okay, so it's just, well, purely... Okay, so it's just purely planning? Okay. Well, then, in that case, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing from you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public at this time? All right, seeing none, we close the floor of the public comment. Are there any comments from the board planner? Board engineer?
I have nothing.
Lou?
Nothing, thank you. Just welcome to the new board secretary.
That's right.
First meeting, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Gina, any comments from you at this time? All right, any comments from members of the board? All right, do I see a motion to adjourn?